Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. This is our August meeting, and we'd like to welcome all of our special guests this evening. We appreciate you coming out to join us. And to start with, I would like to recognize Mr. Estes and ask if he would lead us off a prayer and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow before You, we reach out to You. You said, "If any lack wisdom," but all we need to do is ask You. We praise You for our leaders. We praise You that they have sacrificed, they've stood up to the plate, they're willing and able to seek out and to make decisions. So, we reach out to You for wisdom, for knowledge and understanding, that You would show us the way. You said, "If we would trust in You, lean not to our own understandings, but always acknowledge You that You would direct our paths." So, we claim that verse, that You will direct our paths. Thank You for these who've come, their interest in the county, their interest in each other. Thank You for this group of young men and their leaders who have achieved a goal in their life. We celebrate with them. We praise You for that and pray there'll be many more. Thank You for our young people. Thank You for all citizens of this county, and may You bless the leaders as they do and work hard to make everything good for each citizen. Thank You for this time. You're wonderful. We praise You for it. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank You. At this time, I'd like to ask if there are any additional items to the agenda, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to add this resolution that I have off. It's in front of everybody.
Okay.
Discussion, thank you. Under New Business.
Okay. All right. That would be E under New Business.
Madam Chair, I believe also at your desk in front of you, there is a state aid application group from the library.
Right.
If that can be added to the agenda.
Okay. And in talking with Ms. List, she said that the consent agenda was what she requested. That's typically where we put that. So, that would be item L under the consent agenda, the state aid application approval. Again, that's just our approving receipt.
Under the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. And that would be item L. Okay, anything else?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to, under New Business, if it could be moved to the consent agenda, the consent agenda, Walter Ferguson's up for reappointment, was Sand Hills Mental Health Board.
Okay, move that to the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so item B under New Business, move to consent. So, that would be item M.
Madam Chair, what do we have? We had two reapportments though.
Yes, we had Mr. Ferguson is item B under New Business and Mr. Richardson as Fire Advisory Board.
Boa.
Okay, so, under New Business, item B, Mr. Ferguson's reappointment, and item C, Mr. Richardson's reappointment.
All right, with D as well?
Well, that's on the poll.
That's just an appointment, not a reappointment.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, it would be item M and N. Okay, anything else? Let's see if I can remember all that when we get to it. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, the approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Okay, as amended.
As amended.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we get to the good stuff. At this time, we'd like to come to a great item of business, and that is a proclamation recognizing the Lee County Parks and Recreation 12 and Under All-Stars for winning the Dixie Youth State Championship and going to the World Series. So, at this time, if the team and the coaches would come and kind of stand in front of us, and we'll stand up and we'll get a picture for Ms. Brown back there following her orders, and we'll do that. And after we get the picture, I'll present the proclamation.
Shortstop to get right here. Come here, my man. There you go. That's the position I plead. Yes, sir. I plead shortstop. Yes, I did.
All right, let's see what Ms. Brown says as far as the commissioners need to come in, to gather tighter.
Just take it if you touch down.
Sure.
Okay.
Can you move this way just a little so we don't block this?
Okay, and can you move this? Okay, have to step out. That'll be better.
Hold the left.
More. Okay, ready?
Are we good? Look at G.
One, two, three. And let me get one with my phone so I can take it. Post it.
Social media shot, everybody smile. All right. Are we good? Okay. Okay, and at this time, I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll present it to your coaches as I finish. Whereas the Lee County Parks and Recreation 12 and Under All-Stars Youth Baseball Team exhibited hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry to earn a trip to the 2018 Dixie Youth Ozone World Series. And whereas the 12 U All-Stars won the 2018 North Carolina Dixie Youth State Championship in Eden, North Carolina, with a series of dominating performances that set up a three-way championship round. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach Brad Wiltson and assistant coaches Vinnie Frazier and Travis Seymour, the team defeated both Kings Mountain and South Stanley to win the state title. And whereas, the Lee County Board of Commissioners recognizes the LCPR 12 U All-Stars Youth Baseball Team members Cooper Harrington, Austin Reagan, Josh Hall, Bryson Pope, Drew Stanfield, Deray McLean, Devon Croft, Lawton Hickman, Charlie Jeffries, Thomas Fraser, Cameron Ritchie, and Marcus Tate-Blanks for the accomplishments they demonstrated over the past several months and for their commitment, perseverance, and love of the sport of baseball. And whereas, the team represented Lee County and the state of North Carolina admirably in the 2018 Dixie Youth Ozone World Series in Lumberton, North Carolina, to close out a remarkable 2018 season. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners proclaim August 2018 as Lee County Parks and Recreation 12 and Under All-Stars Youth Baseball Team Month in Lee County, North Carolina, and call upon the residents to observe this month, recognizing and celebrating the team and their contributions to and successes shared with the Lee County community. Dated this, the 20th day of August 2018, we are so proud of you. Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much. You guys are super. Oh. Don't all. Dear folks. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, gentlemen, so very much. We're so proud of you, and we hope to see you back here next year. All right? Okay, good deal. Okay, at this time, is there a motion?
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you. God bless you too, sir. Okay, at this time, do I hear a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, good, good stuff. And I hope they will be back here next year. Trophy, all kinds of good stuff. All right, at this time, moving on to other good things, we have a presentation from our Lee County Young Commissioner, Angel Uwe, and I'd like to call on Angel if she would share with us her experiences from this past summer. I had had the pleasure and opportunity to spend some time with the group and loved every minute of it and see what she's got going at the end of the week. I feel like this won't be the only time I see you this week. Go ahead, Angel. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Chairman Dalrymple. So, hello and good evening, Lee County Commissioners. My name is Angel Uwe from the Lee County 4-H Young Commissioners, a club in which I currently serve as president. I would like to thank you for supporting me as I will be attending the upcoming 4-H Youth Voice as part of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference. As a member of the Young Commissioners 4-H Club, I was able to take advantage of the Youth Voice opportunity as well as many opportunities of volunteering and involvement within Lee County. The Lee County 4-H Young Commissioners assist youth in becoming future leaders through developing a better understanding of different parts of their community, including an increased sense of civic responsibility and being engaged in local government. When the Young Commissioners officially became a part of 4-H a few years ago, the opportunities related to those aspects definitely expanded and continue to provide a variety of options to empower youth to succeed. This summer, I have already participated in 4-H Congress held on NC State University's campus in Raleigh. During my time at 4-H Congress, I competed in the 4-H Application, Interview, Resume, and Essay Competition. This competition focuses on preparing youth with the soft skills they need to be successful in today's workforce, and I was thrilled to find out that I was selected as a state winner, and I will be representing Lee County and North Carolina at National 4-H Congress in Atlanta, Georgia this November. I'm also very excited and grateful to serve as the delegate for Lee County at Youth Voice later this week because I know that it'll be another special chance for me to interact with aspiring young leaders like myself from across North Carolina and to also learn more about how county-elected officials play significant roles in shaping the future landscape of our state. For example, during the summer program of the Young Commissioners, I learned about how the county is divided up into different districts and that I'm personally in District Four, which are things that I normally probably wouldn't have learned on my own if not going through the program. I still remember the time when I and the rest of the new members had to locate our districts on a map with a sticky note, and I was a bit confused because I didn't really know much about the county's government before the summer program. This June, I helped with the summer program for the incoming class and was able to see even more of Lee County's youth that come involved with local government by hearing many of you speak about your responsibilities as a board, such as approving budgets and adopting resolutions. Developing my own leadership skills, increasing my level of community involvement, and learning about Lee County's government has undoubtedly had a genuine impact on my life. Throughout middle school and high school so far, I have had an interest in a career in the medical field. Being a part of the Young Commissioners has helped me to explore the medical field and prepare for a nursing major in college. By doing presentations about various topics at 4-H competitions and Young Commissioners events, I've been much more comfortable about public speaking. For example, presentations for school projects have been much easier, and I anticipate this will help with my nursing career as these public speaking skills will allow me to speak to patients calmly and confidently while building that sense of trust. Through volunteerism and 4-H Young Commissioners, I have also been able to connect with many different young people who also have big dreams for their future, and we discuss with each other how we plan to achieve these dreams. As the president of my 4-H Club, I have gained a better understanding of the importance of applying my leadership skills to foster cohesion and consensus toward a common goal, skills that I'm sure all of you use regularly in county government. I've witnessed how many people in Lee County put forth the personal effort and time to keep improving this area, whether it be through volunteering, serving on committees, helping with the organization of fundraising events for nonprofits, or even serving as an elected official like on the Board of County Commissioners or the County Council. I would like to thank you all for your continued support of valuable youth development programs in our county, such as 4-H, and many others, and making Lee County a positive and memorable place for current and future generations of young people like myself. Thank you again for your support for the upcoming NCAA CC Youth Voice Trip to Hickory, and I hope to see you all there later this week. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Angel. Angel, before you sit down, where will your national competition be?
It'll be in Atlanta, Georgia.
And when will that be?
It'll be the week after Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay. All right, well, keep us posted, and we look forward to good things.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I sure am glad she's in Doc's district.
Thank you, thank you. I'll see you later on this week, Angel. Yeah, we, that is such a great group to be involved with, and I think a lot of us interact with them when they do their two weeks during the summer. And Bill Stone with Cooperative Extension has continued to nurture that group, and it's amazing to me how the alumni come back, you know, when they're in college, just as often as they can, especially during the summer, and really help out with the high school students going through it. So, definitely a successful program raising our young people to be more civic minded. Public comments? Were there any? Okay.
That was one of the best presentations I've heard. Absolutely flawless.
She does an amazing job, and I think we're all expecting good things out of the national competition. So, I wish I could go watch her. I don't know that I can, but if I get a chance, I'd love to go.
You can chair, just go ahead.
Okay, old business. Item A, the consideration of instructing staff to enter into negotiations with fee arrangement with a national law firm to represent the county in the opioid litigation, and that's page 83 of our encyclopedic agenda that we have this month. Ms. Parrish?
So, just a brief recap. The April 16th meeting, the board voted to authorize staff to issue an RFI. That RFI was presented on May 21st, and two firms responded to the RFI, the McHugh Fuller Law Firm and Simmons Hanley Conroy Firm. At the May 21st meeting, the board decided to allow the firms to provide presentations, which the presentations were given at the last Board of Commissioner meeting, July 23rd. And at that time, the board heard from both law firms regarding their theories of the cases and an update on where the cases are currently being litigated in the NBL and ACHA. Since then, just some background information because we felt it was necessary to provide, I've been working with many of the departments within the county, and they have all been very helpful in providing some just data and information in terms of how the opioid epidemic is affecting Lee County. So, I just wanted to give just a little bit of brief overview of some of the things that I've been able to determine but will continue to work with the departments on. Through EMS and the hospital, the hospital's been able to provide different stats on how many OD patients have come to the hospital, and they have also been able to provide the number of, for the EMS specific, the number of Narcan administered and OD dispatch calls since 2012, and those have continued an upward trend up until this past July 1 of '17 to June 30 of '18. Just as a recap from the Health Department, Ashley Graham, who is the Health Education Specialist through the Health Department, was very helpful in providing a lot of information. She also is in charge of Project Lazarus. And just so the board is aware, and I'm sure you all are, but it started back in 2013, was the first time that the prescription drug abuse was discussed at the State of the County Health Report given to the Board of Commissioners, and since then, it's been either part of the, one of the merging issues and then one of the major issues that has been discussed in every, in each State of the County Health Report since 2013. Ashley had, part of her job duties is to run the Project Lazarus, and Heath can correct me if I get this wrong.
I'm ready.
There it is, yeah. And what she has done with that group is to address the prescription drug abuse and overdose in the community, and through that, they've been able to set up like the drop boxes for used prescription medicines and also provide the, at that time, I think it was the Sheriff's Office with Narcan. But that, they were, I think, one of the first groups that got Narcan within the community. And so, she's still working with that and the opioid task force that has since been created, I guess, back last spring. She was also very helpful in pointing me to, the North Carolina DHHS website has a lot of statistical information from NC Detect, and that NC Detect is tracking opioid and heroin used by county and also tracking the rates of unintentional overdose deaths. So, she provided a couple of different PowerPoints. I didn't have them printed, but I have them in my office and can easily share those with anyone. But what that group is from is they're funded through federal grants administered through the Center for Disease Control, and then there is dispersed through NC DHHS. And through the Health Department, they're also seeing, the social workers are dealing with the clients who are being referred for opioid abuse and misuse, and they're, they were able to pull some of those numbers from August of '17 to today. And then with the Sheriff's Office, they were able to gather some information in terms of the number of overdose calls they have been on since 2010, and there was an upper trajectory from 2010 to 2018 as well. They also had issued 14 Narcan reversals since 2016, and they just provided some information that every officer receives a two-hour class on Narcan and how to deploy it before they're, when they're hired as part of their training. And then they have also had, throughout the years, have implemented education for the youth and even adults within the county as well. And we were, we were able just to track that there's been, you know, many arrests. We didn't have time to track how many arrests or anything. I told them this would be kind of an ongoing thing as we continue the discussions, but I was just trying to gather some, you know, initial information. But they've been able to seize, you know, thousands of prescription pills as well. So, that's just a little background in how, with the time I have, with the information we could provide to track, just to provide the board an update as to how it is affecting Lee County. So, at this time, if the board so chooses, they can, or you can direct staff to enter into negotiations, fee negotiations, to work out a fee that's satisfactory to the legal department, a fee arrangement that's satisfactory to the legal department, and then authorize the chair to sign that arrangement. And then, in the meantime, we'll continue to work with the different departments to gather more data, as much data as we can in terms of the effects of the opioid. So, I had indicated, I sent an email to both law firms and told them that it was going to be on the agenda this evening and that it was basically, that their fees were the same, but to basically enter into negotiations to work out the other details of the fee with whichever firm, if the board chooses to do anything, and the board may choose not to do anything at this time as well. And I can answer any questions. I can try.
One, one quick thing, just, and I probably speak for everybody up here, is just the data that you do have in those PowerPoints, if you could email them to us and share those with us so that we could look at those, you know, just to keep us posted and up to date and as you find out any more information or talk to Ashley, Heath, the Sheriff's Department, you know, even if they could just forward it to us, you know, as they, as they share it with you, just send it to Jennifer, and she can disperse it to us or whatever. That'd be great, just to keep us up to date.
I don't recall, and maybe you covered it, and maybe, and I might have missed it, but the fee arrangements that you're, you're talking about, have we had any information along those lines?
In the RFI, so, at the last meeting, I believe it was discussed what their fee, each firm's fee was 25%, and then they both cap at 35% with caucum, or caucum in their fees. But there is a sample fee arrangement that was provided in the RFI for both firms, but we, I didn't really want to go into a lot of detail with either firm in terms of working out the, the rest of the negoti, the rest of the agreement essentially until I knew which firm it was.
And I don't want you to do that, but I just want to take a look at it myself. You don't have to do it now.
Any other questions or discussion for Ms. Parrish?
I've got one for you. Isn't this on the agenda?
It is, and that's one of the things that I've talked to a couple of our board members about, but I hadn't had a chance to talk to everybody because I honestly just got back into town and cut my agenda for the meeting later this week. But starting Wednesday through Sunday is the State Annual County Commissioners Meeting, and this is going to be on the agenda. I know for our Board of Directors meeting, we'll be talking about it some, and then the association as a whole. We've got one workshop and then, and I do encourage all of you, if Netflix is something that you can access, there is a documentary called Heroin, and it's H-E-R-I-O-N and then an E in parentheses at the end, and it's about three ladies that are helping their community deal with opioid epidemic. And when we were in Nashville, we had a lot of discussion about that, and we'll be doing that again in Hickory with the state group at the end of this week. So, that, that was one of the things, and just, and this is just a personal concern, is, you know, maybe before we take the next step, is just to kind of see what the guidance of the association is, and some counties in the state, and I'm kind of looking at John and Whitney here, I think are a little bit ahead of us on this, you know, they've already... You know, they've already moved forward with a firm. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and, you know, I know that they'll be, you know, taking the lead in some of the discussion. Again, nothing, you know, against in, any of the law firms, but I just think the more information that we have, you know, the better decision that we can make. And, and that's what I shared with a couple of you is, you know, maybe if we can make, wait till our next meeting and when I get back, at the, well, I'll be back Sunday, but at the first of next week, I could get the information, share it with the board. But I mean, that's, that's just an offer, you know, to consider.
You refer to the Association, you told me the County Association?
Yeah, the, the, the NCACC.
I was right before making a motion, but if everybody needs more time, I'm not going to force the issue, but.
Just a quick question. So just to a quick refresher, the McHugh Fuller, that's the only one that has local representation at this point, correct?
True.
Right?
At this point, yes.
And that was one of our biggest concerns that we had.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea where we rank in the state among the 100 counties?
We're second. And that's not, that's not per capita, that's number.
But that was just for a defined period of time.
Correct.
So it's kind of deceiving to some.
Correct. So that's why I said.
Was that the murder that came out? I think that was in terms, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that was ER visits for June.
Is that right, Heath?
It was per population, no second.
Right. And Cumberland was seventh, I think. Yeah. So again, that's why I think it's important, you know, if, if we can get as much of that data as we can, kind of get our hands around it.
Do you know how many sta, counties have already committed?
Um, do you know how many you're signed on with?
We, I'm going to have Water.
Come on, Ben.
Sorry, they just have the most and, and then I can give you how many I think the other one has, but.
Along with Chip Post, we're here for the McHugh Fuller Group, and if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you for being here.
At last, at last count, we were up to 48 counties and about five cities in North Carolina and three or 400 across the country. And as I say, any question that you have, we'll answer them as best we can.
And I think the other firm, from when they submitted their RFI responses, I think they had five counties.
In North, in North Carolina.
North Carolina, Mecklenburg, Cleveland, Iredell, Robeson and Cape. So I think that was what they had.
And that representative is not here tonight, right?
No.
No, that's.
I'd rather have the additional information as it relates to what's going on around the county.
Any other discussion or?
Mr. Reeves, this information, we'll give it for him. We'll make a decision.
Okay, okay. Okay. So just, is there a motion to maybe table it and then we'll come back next? Okay. Okay. More discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I, I will certainly get that information to, or to Jennifer. That'll be the best way to do it when I get back. And, and, and we will certainly be in communication.
Have any questions in the meantime going forward?
Absolutely. And please understand, I mean, you know, that we're, we're just, as I said, just trying to get our hands around, around all the information and.
Well, we had to drive like two miles to get here, so it's not a problem.
And that's very important. We understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
That's, that's very important. Thank you.
And if you have any other questions for either firms, you know, I can send out, obviously their chair, but I can send out emails to both.
Okay. And it is definitely, and I think I was talking to Commissioner Reeves, I read an article over the weekend that we had 72,000 opioid deaths this year across the country. So that, that, to me, that's just a staggering number. So a lot of heavy lifting to do and quickly. The litigation is important, but we need to stop these folks from going to the emergency room and.
One thing, I, I need help from Whitney because of working for a pharmaceutical. And I know certain pharmaceuticals have been excluded, but in the last few weeks, I've read where certain companies have bought other companies. And it's changed the whole dynamics. And so that's part of my hesitation to move forward.
Okay.
Because I need to understand.
I can, yeah, I'll, yeah, research that and then reach out to both. Because I know in some of the conversations, we had indicated that we do have a pharmaceutical company locally. And so at that time, they were not part of any of the lawsuits now in terms of buying or subsidiaries and all, I'm not, I'm not sure of all that, but yeah.
Wouldn't you?
We can look into that.
Wouldn't you also want to frame your, your, your concern and maybe ask Pfizer about the same issue? Let their attorney address you perhaps.
I just, I've seen, I've read two different articles.
Yeah.
Since we've been, you know, just in the last two weeks, talking about this topic where it has changed the litigation strategy because of a company being sold and purchased by another one.
Yeah.
So.
How would that affect the litigation?
Well, that's, I don't know. That's my question.
Well, it impacts his role perhaps.
Whether he's able to participate or not in discussions and stuff.
And for the future, you've got to figure that out too.
Right. Well, and also, you know, it, it's, it's not a concern, it's just, again, just trying to kind of understand the full picture, that, that I hope to get some more guidance on in Hickory is, you know, what is the State Attorney General doing? You know, and how is that going to impact what the counties and the cities are doing? And, and how does that all kind of work together? And of course, you know, I think most all of you know, the Association has a great legal staff. So I, I think they'll be giving some good advice.
Everybody's concerned about how they're going to disperse the funds anyway.
That's true. And we don't want, you know, having lived through the tobacco settlement, we do not want a repeat of that because the tobacco settlement went to the states and the people, you know, the, the farmers and the communities that really needed that. And, and, you know, school systems, health departments for anti-smoking campaigns and stuff, you know, that never trickled down. The state just took it and kept it for the most part. And we have to beg for Golden Leaf Grants.
That's what I got, right.
So we don't want that to be a repeat with this.
Probably need to start talking about it, it'll be on one of the constant, con, constitutional amendments.
Careful.
Yeah. Add it on. Let, let me also suggest that maybe you talk with Attorney Post and Atwater about this situation, and you might want to bring it up at the state meeting for anyone working for a chemical.
A pharmaceutical company?
Pharmaceutical.
Okay, okay. Good point.
How it impacts their board vote. We could wind up with a six vote as opposed to seven, the committee.
Yeah.
We could ask for that. We could choose who we name as defendants as well, and that can be part of the choice. But I, we can definitely ask and have that conversation. And also reach out to the NCACC as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I want to support the firms that are going to hire a local firm, period, but certainly I would want them to also look into this because we have a person that works for a pharmaceutical company. And put them to work as well.
And just out of fairness to the Hanley Conroy Firm, I believe, they indicated, from what I can tell having conversations, that they, I don't think they're opposed to hiring a local firm. They just, that wasn't what they did in terms of how they all came about as opposed to that.
I didn't take it that way, but they didn't, they didn't have anybody.
They didn't.
Be counting when it comes, so.
I just wanted, I just, to be fair.
Yeah.
True. Okay. Any more discussion on that? Okay. All right. Consideration of an upset bid offer for the purchase of surplus property located on Lemon Springs Road. And that's on page 84 to 88.
So that was also on, at the last Board of Meeting, we had received, well, let me start over. What's owed on that property is $6,221.95, and the taxable value of the property is $13,000. We had received the initial offer of $1,000. Mr. Martin had issued the 5% deposit plus the advertising costs. We authorized, or, at that time, the board authorized the advertisement in the Herald. The advertisement in the Herald ran on August 2nd of 2018, and we received the first upset bid on that from David Taylor of $1,100. And he has paid his 5% deposit and advertising costs. So this time, the board can accept the upset bid and then go ahead and advertise that and move, move the property along.
Do we accept the upset bid moving forward as presented?
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. Right. Parks and Recreation Report on Project and Bonds, page 89 to 202. It's a lot of information, but good.
Well, I think y'all wanted information, so you got it.
And we got it. We asked for it.
So we talked about it at the la, last board meeting, and the concept plans for the four parks that we're discussing to use the bonds with, Horton, Temple, OT Sloan and Kiwanis Children's Park are all in here. We do have, that, now I didn't make copies, probably should have made copies of this, but do have an interim plan for each park that would keep it within budget and that we're recommending. But you'll notice that, like OT Sloan Park, you know, there are some pretty big ticket items there that we'll put in a long-term master plan that we won't be able to address. But there are some things in, at OT Sloan that we need to go ahead and, and take care of, and that's basically the tennis courts rearranging the entrances and using the entrance where the state, new state employees credit union is, they're putting in a, in basically a road extension there for us to, that will go to our property. And then we'll take that and, and take that around to the lower part of the park and eliminate the driveway, the dirt gravel driveway that goes where the dog park and the tennis courts are, which is a dangerous entrance right there because of the, the curve, people trying to come out of there and go left, you can't see to the right. And there have been some accidents there, so we're going to eliminate that and just have the two entrances, the one there at, at the Employees Credit Union, and the other one that basically essentially takes you to the pool and the, and the Boys and Girls Club. So.
You're going to close that entrance and then are you going to leave that road in there?
It will go back to natural state.
Okay.
So they'll be able to come in, I'm sorry, they'll be, the way I'm thinking is you can, you'll be able to access the park through the stoplight intersection?
Yes. That's what we're trying to do, to create a safer ingress and egress there at that stoplight.
That'll be great.
And the DOT help with that design of that intersection, knowing that that would occur. And the State Employees Credit Union is basically paying for that new intersection and the extension of the road to the back of their property, which if you remember, we gave them an easement to do, construction easement, and allow them ingress and egress to the, to that road.
Right. Okay, sorry.
Oh, you're good. Ask, ask questions. So, you know, the number one priority there is the tennis courts because they're in bad disrepair. We'll move three of the courts so that we can move our road, take our road through there, basically stack the courts back to back. Also, strike the courts for pickleball, address the open field area that would be behind the State Employees Credit Union, create some open space there with lots of grass. And then we have to relocate the Frisbee golf thing. By the way, I left John off the abstract tonight. I apologize for doing that, but there was a chance he wasn't going to be here tonight. So anyway, I'm kind of doing this for him tonight, so.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here, though.
He has a lot going on, so I'm glad he could make it as well. So at Horton Park, we discussed with the consultant what to do with the pool. And in the revised expectations there, they have come up with a 5,000 square foot mini splash pad, kind of similar to what, what down, is downtown, it's about the same size, but it has a lot more elements, a lot more sprinklers and that kind of stuff for the kids to run through. Also, address gravel, gravel paving and parking. And there was some discussion about what to do with, you know, some of the park equipment there and how to just make that court look a lot better and make those basketball courts look better. So there are some things that have to be removed there too. And talked about a walking trail as well. But that was, once again, they, that was, would be able to get back the budget. One of the things that we really changed up in talking with the consultant was Temple Park. Really, there's no need for any ball, baseball fields there. We have plenty of baseball fields. So once again, we worked towards grassing those fields and creating more open space in the long term, look at basketball court. But there's a big expense lurking out there, and that is the, we have a, a pipe that runs through that site, and it's going to be pricey to fix that. So that's going to take up quite a bit of the money that's allocated towards that. But that was something we inherited when we inherited the park from the city back in the seventies. And that pipe is probably a little old and just needs to be replaced. So that's going to take up quite a bit of that. And then Kiwanis Children's Park, still, we're in the middle of a lot of discussions on Kiwanis Children's Park, and I've been pretty frustrated, as John would know, but trying to get some agreements with DOT and the city on the roundabout there at Wicker and Carthage. And, you know, we knew we were going to lose some property there to the roundabout, but now they're talking about widening, widening Carthage going down to the intersection and taking some more property from us, which means that under LWCF rules, we have to, you know, for acre for acre, you know, find other park property. And they were not going to allow us to count the JC property because under an original plan of the park, it was supposed to be a community building there. So they determined that under their deal, that that was not, they're not going to give us credit there. So we have to go somewhere else and buy property. And I think we have it clear that the DOT and the city are going to do that for us as part of the relocation.
You're talking about riding from the Hartback Court car and road?
It's back towards, right there at the Madison Shop.
Yeah.
So, yes, sir. So anyway, those plans are moving a lot quicker, but that also changes the location of the greenway that would come through the park. So we're not real sure where it's going to go. The same consultant here is involved with that design, so we're not really ready to start with where we're going to place, you know, a trailhead there. But we do need, again, we need to address the tennis courts because the LWCF, we have a requirement there. Also, looking at additional tables, benches, there's some playground equipment in that park that's 50 years old that needs to be replaced and, or removed and, and replaced. Doing some work to that parking lot there. If you've ever been in that parking lot, you know that it's not an easy parking lot to get in and out of. And in this design, they've completely redesigned it to add spaces and make it easier to get in and out. So actually do away with that little drive between the parking lot and the tennis courts. So once again, they came up with an idea there to come within the budget, but, you know, the plans are extensive. There was obviously a lot of input from the public. They tried to address as much as they could, you know, knowing that we would have to take a long-term look at some of the major elements, like the, the pool at OT Sloan, just not enough money to really do anything with the pool at this point. And. And, uh, you know, there's been some talk about the gymnastics, Parks and Recreation building there. And, uh, you know, I've been here eleven years, and I think Parks and Rec has talked about that building for eleven years. So it's been a long time. And gymnastics is one of the most popular programs we run, probably the most popular program we run.
Makes a little money, too.
Yeah, it makes a little bit of money, six to seven hundred kids go through that program. But, um, those are just things that are gonna have to wait for the, in the future.
Soccer fields?
Soccer fields, um, we have, we do not have specific soccer fields in these plans. We have open spaces that could be used, uh, as rectangle fields, um, at Temple Park and one field at, um, OT Sloan.
John, your walking park out there, you call it, call some killers.
Yes, sir.
I know we got the splash pad, the city's gonna put the splash pad in there.
Yes, sir.
About the existing parking lots, I would look at them Saturday. They need to be serviced and bad.
Under the city's...
Go ahead, John, I gotta let you take it, cause you, John's been working with the city on that plan.
Under the city's plan, the entrance will be repaved and the main parking area will be redone and expanded. So it'd just be that, that parking area by the gazebo when you, when you turn left, yeah. Uh, but it needs it too, it needs tearing up and, and repaving.
I know your, your argument's turning loose, and that's a sure sign you're gonna be having potholes.
We're, we're already filling them.
Yeah, I know that, they need resurancing, but anyway, maybe we find some funds later on.
After they get finished with the construction, maybe we'll address that, but we might wanna let them.
Yeah, all the big equipment in there.
Yeah, I just, I just have a feeling, just got a feeling out there.
Okay, other questions?
I've got one. In, in all these evaluations, do you ever discuss, how do we keep track of the usage? You, you know, one concern I often have in spending large amounts of money is you, you may hear fifty people scream about having more tennis, uh, courts available. And in the course of six months, you may see twenty-five people playing tennis, and you've spent all this money. At, at some point, I would hope that this board and, and your board would take a look and prioritize where the demand really is. And we spend money a, a, along those lines.
Yes, sir.
I, I just think that that's something you gotta start taking a look at. I don't...
Type of usage, what you're talking about, and the type of usage.
Sure, sure. I mean, just billing because it's a fad, this, this is something that everybody seems to want in the neighborhood, but if nobody's using it, then it was just a waste of money. I don't think that this plan represents that. But it's certainly something I think we need to start considering as we spend large chunks of money.
That's the way we try to divvy up our, um, ball fields at this point. Prioritize, uh, user groups and that sort of thing, especially a tramway road. Because, uh, if you don't keep the gates locked and, uh, you know, and, and regulate play, then the fields get worn out and we can't keep them up. So we wanna maintain those at a, at a very high quality level.
Right.
So, uh, so far, we've been fairly successful with that, but that's the thing, we can track most of that play.
Yeah, the, the recreation usage for organized leagues is easy to track. Just the general use, just say tennis courts or the park. We'd have to, we'd have to hire or get some interns and, uh, and have them go out there and do some counts, periodic counts, to find out what's going on. Because the static parks are there mainly, you know, just for people to be able to drive up and use them.
You look at, like, for example, as we discuss soccer a lot, you don't have a lot of rec opportunities for that to even count in our parks.
Well, we have never, you know, until recently, you know, and this goes back to the eighties when Sassel was, was developed. The county and the city basically were out of the soccer business. Nobody wanted our help with the soccer business. And now, mainly because of the cost and the fact that we have a, a growing soccer community that needs regulation-sized fields, now they're coming to us. And that's, and if you look, you know, I had it put into my manager's report at the back, if you look at the cost of creating those rectangle fields at the mega park, now you see why they're coming to us. Because fifteen million dollars for ten soccer fields, ten rectangle fields, two of them being astroturf, is a lot of money. And we talk about getting people involved and that kinda thing, and I've even told some people who brought that up to me, I said, it's, you know, if, uh, folks really want it, maybe, you know, bond referendum is in the future. But, um, you're not gonna have a bond referendum here until the spring of two thousand and twenty.
If then?
Yes, ma'am. That's the earliest you could do it.
Any more questions for Mr. Payne?
Add one other point, you mentioned the soccer fields. When the school built its field, are they built regulation-sized or do you know anybody?
They are regulation, uh, to Mr. Reeves. Soccer doesn't have a, a set field dimension like football does.
Okay.
In high school.
In high school. A, a soccer field can be the same dimensions as a, uh, regulation high school football field. Or it could be like, uh, Broughton and Raleigh where you, you've got a field of seventy-five yards wide and three hundred and sixty yards long.
Okay.
You know, so it's, they got a huge field up there. Our guys went up there and played and, uh, they were gassed.
I bet, wow.
So, the point I was making is that, for example, if there was gonna be a soccer field over at, maybe at the Wicker, uh, new site, I think we'd be wise to, at some point in time, build one at least regulation-sized for adults. There seems to be a difference, is what I'm hearing, and if there is, we ought to at least build one so that we have that in play.
The FIFA fields are, are wider and longer than what we, than what the stadiums, I think, are at the high schools.
The point then, if we're gonna build them, let's build at least one that, that fits the description.
I don't think they, soccer field is in the, is in the plan for the Wicker school.
Oh, no, no, I'm just using that as an example, when you do build them.
Anything else? Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Crumpton? So, at this point, um...
What we would like to do is, we would like to work with the, the consultant to go ahead and put together bid packages for each site and bring it back to the board in September for them to approve the elements that go into those bids. And go ahead and start getting bids out on the street for these.
And would they, would the bid package that you put together, would it just be for, you know, as, as I read through the report, you prioritize, the staff prioritized?
And then you would confirm the prioritization.
Right. It won't be everything.
It will not.
It's just the prioritization, okay.
And to keep it within the budget for each park.
Now, is that staff and the recreation board, is that the way it's gonna come back to us?
Yeah, they meet next week.
We meet next Monday night.
Alright, so the recreation board was sent forth the recommendation. Alright.
Okay. Um, and then, at the end, if magically there's money left over, then we'll see what to do with it.
One of the, one of the things, I'll just make this comment now, I was gonna make it later, but one of the things that was interesting in the numbers that came from this consultant and also the architect for the, for the courthouse is they both have extremely large contingencies. And the one, and the, the estimates I got from the architect included a twelve-month cost escalator that was twenty percent. And, um, I was floored by, by the contingency and what they were trying to put in place to say, well, you know, we're making a guess now of what it's gonna be like six months from now, when you're gonna go to bid and all that kinda stuff. But if you don't have a larger contingency and, and an escalator ready, you may, you, you're not gonna have enough money. That's how fast they're seeing the prices change in the market. And, uh, we saw it happen out at the terminal building at the airport. Twenty, twenty, twenty-five percent increase in a matter of six to twelve months.
I tell you, that's, that's kinda tough.
It's tough.
Do you, is, is, is that because of the politics with the tariffs and steel and everything? Or is that just the demand for construction in our area or a combination of both?
All the above.
All the above, okay.
The biggest thing, everybody's busy.
Yeah.
Trying to get the subs, it's difficult, but we've been, we've been fortunate down at, uh, Broadway Park. As you know, Broadway's, you know, not listed in this because we're, we're, we're piecemealing that together through our, through Parks and Rec and General Services. Cause that's how we're getting it done.
Yeah, we're busy down there.
It is. And they got, you know, the building is really starting to come together for, you know, to move Tiny Tots. And, once we move Tiny Tots, we'll be here to talk to you about that building that we're vacating, that the, down on Broadway would like to have us, uh, donate back to them.
Along those lines, just a quick question for you, John. But are you increasing the amount of children that can attend Tiny Tots in Broadway because of the building size?
We're gonna keep it at about fifteen.
Okay.
That way, that gives us, uh, an instructor and, um, an aide, but, you know, a one-date ratio is basically what we're looking at. And, uh, we're looking at actually putting a, a wall, uh, in the, that community building down there. So that Tiny Tots, we won't have to jockey all of their stuff out every Monday and then jockey it, you know, back away every Thursday.
Right.
So, and, uh, with the, uh, GM that is closed down there by East Lee, I've already been hit up. Uh, they want yoga classes, they want this and that, so it won't be any trouble to, to keep the thing booked on weeknights out there.
Correct, correct. Okay, right, thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Crumpton needs a motion, is my understanding to move...
I don't think I really need a motion.
You don't need a motion?
As long as, you know, I've got a consensus right now that we're moving to the next point, I'll need a motion at the September meeting.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, moving along to the next item D, the Sanford Area Growth Alliance CEO report to the board. There you are, hey, welcome.
I just need to know the next time that I don't follow Angel.
Isn't that the truth? Hi, I just, wow.
But thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, um, staff, for an opportunity to come and provide you an update on the Sanford Area Growth Alliance and the activities going on. Uh, first, we'll bring your attention to visitor services, and I know that we don't have the visitor services program, um, anymore at this point. But I had put together a report that I had provided to the city and wanted to provide it to you as well. Um, and you have that, um, information, it's, looks like this in the packet. And it was important to me because, um, you all had, along with the city, funded a visitor services program for us. And I wanted you to know what took place with the funds and that there was activity, um, and I wanted to provide you the report. So I'm not gonna go over it in detail, you can read through that. But I do wanna mention, um, some of the, um, accomplishments that were done. And we first started out with a visitor's services program with working with a committee that, um, consisted of resources throughout the county that visitors would come and take, um, place, uh, come and visit and things like, um, Parks and Recs for one was on our visitor services and even the jet port and, um, clays and, um, kayaking and just all the different things that we would bring this group together to see what we did have to offer. Um, we also hired our director, Crystal McIver, and she should be commended for, uh, the effort of this program being as successful as it was. Um, we developed a program that never existed before. She went out and did a SWOT analysis within the community, asking about, um, you can see in the report there, the strengths and weaknesses that, that folks in the community saw within our commu-, uh, as far as our visitor services. A lot of relationship building, um, community marketing, tourism connections, uh, with trips that was done to New York and DC and other places. We were a voice for getting the occupancy tax passed and then also the coloring book. And I think I've mentioned that so much, I'm sure you're aware of the coloring book, but I will mention that we still have communities that are asking us about our coloring book and, um, using that as an example of what to do in their community. And I will say that those coloring books were delivered to all the first graders, um, at the end of the school year last year. And it was just great to go in there and visit with them, give them the coloring book on their community along with a little box of crayons. And the teachers really appreciated the fact that they had something, uh, representing their own community. We also had the Welcome Center, which is, um, at the Buggy Company and a place that visitors can come to when they're coming, uh, to the community and get information of places to visit within the community. And then my personal favorite is the billboard on fifteen five oh-one now says, "Welcome to Sanford," instead of advertising another community, um, when you come in. Uh, this, uh, program was done in phases. Phase one is how we looked at it. Uh, phase one was what could we do with the funds that we had available? And then phase two would be what could be done once the, um, Tourism Development Authority was set up. Because we did not wanna obligate funds that they would have, so we never went into anything that was too long-term. But what could we do, um, now that could continue on, but not, um, obligate funding for later in the future? So that was the way that we looked at that, and you'll see it broken down in that report. But I did wanna thank you personally for the funds that you provided. I think it made a significant difference in the visitor services program. And I'll just read the last little bit of this report on the last page. "The Growth Alliance staff working on the visitor services program with a team effort, contributing over fifteen hundred hours to create and develop the program." That was staff beyond our, uh, paid position of the director. "We look forward to the activities that will be led by the Sanford Tourism Development Authority to continue the great work started with the visitor services program." And then you can see some of the collateral that is attached there as example. And so I just wanna again, thank you for the funding that was provided for that program. And, um, I, I think it does start a, a significant foundation for visitor services in the community. I'll move on to the, um, DCI marketing report. This is the larger report. And this is the work that was done, um, with DCI, our marketing team, um, through the fiscal year, June thirtieth. And we wanted you to see a report, again, this was, um, an effort that was done for you all, providing support and supporting our five-year plan to hire a marketing firm. And we wanted you to see what was taking place with this firm. They provide us monthly reports. Um, and then also, one of the key things that they did was set up meetings for, um, us to talk with site selectors. Bob, um, did those meetings, a lot, most of them were on, um, calls. But you can see the, um, level of folks that we were talking to with their bios there. And then it led to times that Bob were at meetings or conferences and would see these folks, and they would be able to have an, an add-on conversation, um, which was exactly what we were hoping for. So I think that we found a successful match, um, in working with DCI. And, um, you can read through this information, and if you have a question, even after tonight, that you continue to read this, I'm happy to answer it, or Bob can answer it. And then I would say that per the five-year plan and your continued support, we will be working with DCI one more fiscal year, um, that we obligated with them and have gotten the work that we were gonna, are gonna do with them set up. In economic development, I will mention that the projects, the new projects worked this calendar year so far has been fifty-three compared to thirty-three this time last year, so you can see the efforts are paying off. You have the pyramid in front of you, um, that gives the information on some of the projects and where we are with that. I will mention that in the last six weeks, three visits have taken place with two being a direct result of the spec building. And although it's still in the planning stages, we have interest in the building. I will, um, caution you to manage expectations, um, that although we think it will bring success rather quickly, the concept allowed for two years to be able to have a tenant in that building, but I will tell you that... But I will tell you that it's already being useful in getting us not only looks, but visits to the community. I wanna mention that we have a visit for a project that we just had last week. And I can tell you that we all thought Bob was a superstar, but now we know it because he actually got off of a plane first thing on Tuesday morning, coming back from vacation and hitting the ground, literally running, and the fact that he had a visit. And thanks to the team at the Growth Alliance for being able to have everything in place for him. But this project would be a very unique project, but it would bring in hundreds of jobs at a very good pay. And I will say that we are on the short list, and we'll find out Thursday if we make the shorter list. So keep your fingers crossed about that. We also have a project announcement on August the 28th at 10 o'clock at the Innovation Center. You'll get an invite, it'll go out soon, but this is a project announcement we've all been hoping for. And we're proud to be able to make that happen on August 28th.
Secretary of Commerce.
Secretary of Commerce will be here for that announcement. I also wanna mention that Jimmy Randolph has been hired as our existing industry development manager. There he is. And so you can probably tell little stress has come off Bob and the fact that he has twenty more projects this year. And now he has somebody going out and taking care of our existing industry. And Jimmy has truly taken this position and started moving it forward, making visits to our industry, and provides a report weekly as to who he met with, the outcomes of that. And we've been able to help industry from those visits. And I think that, again, this was in the five-year plan and something that you all supported. And it has definitely proven to be a good thing that was done. And I think Jimmy will serve us well in that position. Little bit away from economic development, I wanna mention operations. We just finished our year-end June 30th, very strong. The county manager was at our finance committee meeting last week. And then also wanna mention that per our contract, last year we had an audit. This year, we're required to have a review. And the preliminary work on that's already taken place with our CPA. So that should be taken care of probably by the end of September and October. I wanna mention chamber work that takes place within the Growth Alliance. Our membership is currently at 568. We still have our goal of 600 and still think that that's feasible. And I do wanna mention that as we were looking at the year-end information, comparing the time of the chamber revenue and the events revenue from June 30th of 2015 when I came in, the revenue has grown over sixty percent. And this is due to processes and procedures and a great staff in place to help make this happen. I think that there's opportunity certainly for continued growth. But I think it's important to note that not only is the Growth Alliance revenue growing through investors and public, but it's also growing in our chamber and events category as well. We do have our annual meeting, September 12th, at Carolina Trace. And then I'll also mention that there's a magazine that comes out, Area Development. This is something that site selectors utilize, and we go to a lot of their events. And this particular edition, they had golden shovels and silver shovels that they gave out. And they gave North Carolina a gold shovel. And I just wanted to mention, I can send this out to you in a PDF, that two regions are mentioned, the Charlotte region and then the Research Triangle Park is mentioned. And then one county is mentioned, and that's Lee County. And that was for our work that was done with manufacturing and Pilgrim's Pride expansion. So it's great to have had some exposure from the work that we've been doing and how it's paying off. The last thing I'll say is that the new CEO has been named for the Growth Alliance. Michael Smith was named and will take over September the 11th. So with that, this is my final report to the board. And I wanted to tell you that I've been grateful for the opportunity to have worked with you. My hope is that you feel as though I left the organization strong and that during my time, I met your expectations and was a good steward of the funds you entrusted to Saga. It's been my honor to work with the Sanford Area Growth Alliance and serve Sanford and Lee County.
Thank you, Joy.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
I'm having to answer anyway.
Any questions?
Chair, I'd just like to say, since that's my board, I'd like to express my thanks to her for what she's done. She's done an excellent job, and we're proud of what's happened in your tenure.
Thank you. Definitely, definitely.
Yep, you certainly brought us out of the dark.
That's for sure, that is for sure. And in quick fashion as well, Joy. Yeah, we do thank you for your service to our county. We're gonna miss you, we wish you the best.
Well, I appreciate that, and I will say that the Growth Alliance is in good hands with the staff and the things that's been implemented, that the success and growth should continue without missing a beat.
That shows what a good staff you put together then. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Okay, moving into new business on page 2003. A discussion regarding the role of ADA committee. And Ms. Gamble, I'll go ahead and start, and then if there's a question, I'll kick it to you. Is that okay? Okay. A few weeks ago, Ms. Gamble had a call from a new appointee to our ADA committee. And she requested a meeting. So Ms. Gamble and I met with her. And as you'll see in our agenda, you'll see the old resolution to establish the ADA Compliance Committee that was formulated. Gosh, I'm trying to think. The appointees of that were 1993, 94, 92, yeah. So the reason why we established the ADA committee was if there was a grievance by citizen about any of our facilities or services or activities or functions sponsored by the county, that they could bring that grievance before the ADA committee, and they would listen to it. And then they would bring it before the commissioners if they felt like it had merit. And in a meeting with this new board member, she was interested in modifying the mission of our ADA committee because Ms. Gamble did a lot of research. And since the committee was formed, they've never had to meet, you know, and hear a grievance. So the new member felt like that, you know, the board members could do a whole lot of good for the county with their interest in things being ADA compliant. And if you look at all, I mean, one of the things, if you read the report on our parks, the thing that struck me as something very serious was a lot of the places in our park and our park equipment are not ADA compliant. And, you know, kind of to Mr. Reeves' point about spending money, you know, if we're gonna spend money on our parks, we want them to, we wanna make sure that they're ADA compliant and as many of our citizens as possible can use the equipment and the facilities in our parks. And also, just, we had a great meeting with this young lady and talked about, you know, even though, and we have places in our county, that they're ADA compliant, but they're still challenging for people. You know, they could have been done better for the same amount of money, just kinda going that extra step, that extra mile. And we felt like that perhaps, you know, if this board would consider just, you know, expanding their mission to where as we look at our park plans and then in the future, you know, that they would just kinda be an oversight committee to put another set of eyes on things. So I'll just bring that to the board for your consideration and discussion.
And I've had a lot of requests for handicap swings.
Yeah, I have too.
We're doing that, aren't we? I think we have three. Kiwanis Children's Park would include handicap-accessible swing.
But the one thing, and that's why, it was just really timely to meet with this young lady because right before, or right after we met, I went to Nashville and, you know, their exhibit hall, they have every company that sells things to county government known to humankind. And I talked to several companies, one in particular, that sold playground equipment, you know. And man, it is amazing how, you know, a lot of equipment for children that, you know, need, have some special physical challenges. Some of them, I mean, you can't, they look like, you know, I mean, there's no difference. It used to be, I know, when we bought the playground equipment at Broadway School, there was a definite difference between what was, you know, one kind of equipment and what was the ADA equipment. Nowadays, they've changed that, and, you know, all the kids will wanna play on all the equipment. And most of the equipment, you know, any child can play on. And you're not talking about, you know, dollar-wise, that, you know, that much difference, you know.
In some cases.
In some cases, correct, correct. So having, you know, a committee like this maybe that could help the Parks and Rec Board, you know, just work together.
The city has a major element for ADA in the splash pad. It's quite a big, quite a big piece of it.
Didn't we set aside some money for wheelchair swing?
That was the money that you set aside in the budget for the Kiwanis Family Park.
Right.
That would go towards that park equipment.
Right, and that was about five grand for that, for that one swing. And that's why, again, in my opinion...
More than that.
More than that?
Yes, sir.
I don't wanna know that.
Well, it just wasn't a swing. You have to have to create the access to it.
Right.
So you got a lot more to it.
Right.
And that's the thing I was about to say. I think the ADA committee idea is good in terms of what... I talked to the clerk this morning, and one of the things that I felt that they could do, I like the idea, but the first thing I will say is if they get a complaint, I've always felt strongly that this board ought to know about any serious matter before the state or feds come in to investigate. That's the first thing. The second is that they shouldn't get carried away because we don't, maybe we don't have what they're looking for at a particular time and place. Again, that goes to attendance, and that's very important. But it would seem to me they would do very, very well by attending Parks and Recreation, attending the school board, Florida Night, for example, and take it upon themselves to do some assessments throughout the county, and come back, get together with, for example, the Board of Education if they were on Florida Night. And then bring forth a recommendation or for consideration. I like that idea, and it would help us.
And it was refreshing to me, and I told her so, to sit in that meeting and to have a new board member of one of our committees come and say, you know, I'd like to do more on this committee.
I wanna work.
Yeah, exactly. So, and I'll refer to Ms. Gamble, you reached out to all the other board members, correct?
Yes, ma'am, and I got a consensus that everyone on that board is interested in expanding the role and participating.
So that was good to hear, they were all excited about it.
Good.
But you'll see before you, on page 204, just the resolution modifying the role of our Americans with Disabilities Act committee. So just put that before you for consideration or motion.
So moved.
Oh, okay. Any more discussion? And Ms. Gamble and I'll work with the committee, and I'm the liaison for that committee, and had forgotten about it because we don't ever meet. So...
And one thing I have is a public service announcement indicating that the committee does exist. And here's what you do if you have a concern or complaint.
Right, right. So we'll pull them together for a meeting and have a discussion and kinda...
I hope the fact that, like you said, I hope that we haven't had any grievances because we haven't had any need for grievances.
Right, right.
Not that they don't know about it.
Right.
So I like to look at the positive of that, but still, people need to know it's available.
Okay, so there's a motion for, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have moved item B and C to consent. So item D is consideration of appointment of Amelia Guerrero as an alternate on the Parks and Rec Commission. Ms. Gamble?
As Chair Dowell repom knows, Amelia Guerrero is actually the young lady that is currently serving on our ADA committee and approached us with those concerns and wanting to expand the role. That was, this is actually her second term serving on the ADA committee. She's been serving since, excuse me, 2015. You know, one of our suggestions to her during the meeting, when she expressed a desire to become more involved, was to apply to the Parks and Recreation Commission. As you may recall, back in June, the organization of that commission was changed to create two new alternate positions that we have advertised for. And she has applied for one of those alternate positions, and she fulfills requirements to suit that position.
Does she serve only, how many, that'll be two boards she serves?
That'll be two boards, and so she's aware that she will not be eligible for any further boards.
I'll move the pointer to that board.
Okay.
Just a quick, just a quick thing. You know, like in the health board, we have different people that will be required to be on the health boards. Maybe you put a park and rec, maybe you put in there as a position, somebody from the ADA board that hold a position, whoever they wanna send over there as an advisor in the future, you know. So they're not sitting on two boards, they just come and help advise as well. Or make it a recommendation for the Parks and Rec Board to have somebody from there as a sitting member on that board.
And it sounds like we might need to look into changing...
Yeah, I'm just throwing that out there.
Changing the organization with the Parks and Rec Commission again if we have a standing member that's representative. But I'll look into that and bring something forward at a future meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we've got the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item E is the resolution from Commissioner Connect. That was... That was tonight, and I'll let you just check over.
All right, this resolution is just before you, just to try and let people be aware that there is a need for soccer in the community. And somebody for economic development has brought a potential semi-pro team to the county, and they would like to play their games here, which would bring a lot of revenue, bring people to town. Unfortunately, facilities aren't ready for them to play on a private field. And I was hoping that we could, you know, let the school board know that we'd like them to look into this person leasing out their field in terms of, you know, paying for the maintenance, any security involvement, things of this nature, just for the short term, to be able to play here so we can keep the team here. And we always look for things for people and kids to do, and this is a big thing. This is in the same league as the Railhawks, things of this nature. Now, I already know that there's some reservations of having this as a resolution, and I don't mind changing that to be more of a letter of support from the board so that the school board will, you know, look into this matter, maybe a little bit more urgency. So that maybe we can get permission or, you know, set up sub-time lease agreement for a short-term use of one of the fields of the high schools.
Have they approached the school board, Andre?
Yes, they have.
Have they actually appeared before the board?
Only in terms of two... Only in terms of two-minute segment, you know, public comments. So they've been talking to some of the board members in, in private. Um and at this point in time, I don't know, I, I don't feel there's good headway just in terms of field usage and things, but as they had told them, they'd do the repairs of the field. They'll help with concessions in terms of not even manning them, but also giving back to the school funds. So I don't know if all of that is known or taken into consideration by the school or not. I don't know. Even if we even get a meeting together where everybody sit down, the reason, the urgency is that season's going to start soon. So if we don't have the possibility to play, then it's an okay. And I think, you know, for youth and everything in this particular area, we always look for them for things to do. And not only things to do, but also, you know, things to aspire to in the future.
Uh is this a for-profit or a non-profit?
This is a for-profit, you know, it's definitely a for-profit. And that's why I'm talking about, you know, a lease, they don't want anything for free. You know, they're willing to pay back for usage.
And they need a place for six games.
Yeah, so it's just.
Six home games.
Six, six home games, it's not a lot, it's maybe once or twice a month.
Well, I would be a, a, opposed to a resolution to the school board. I don't think that's the right direction for us to go in. They're an elected board just like we are and have their own independence. I would be happy to support perhaps a letter uh to that organization recommending that they prepare a summary of what it is they're willing to offer and go before, make a formal request to go before the school board. And we send it to that individual and copy the school board on it showing that we've had, some of you have had a discussion with them.
Well, the, it's just a, I don't have a problem with letter. It's just the timeframe that, that your, what it's going to take, the next time the school board meets is not going to be till next month. And by that time, I think it's game over. So there may be something hopefully that we can set up in, in the interim sooner with some of the school board members.
Well, the, the resolution, it's no different. If you send a resolution, they're not going to act.
I didn't say it doesn't have to be a resolution, a letter's fine.
I agree, but, but all I was saying is let's instruct or suggest to them that they go for, make a formal request to meet with some members of the Board of Education uh for a quick meeting, talk about what it is they're willing to do in, in exchange for the use of the fields.
Like their facilities committee.
That's correct.
Well, I'm looking at this last paragraph, he's in this thing, you know, and uh Lee County Board of Commissioners request, Lee County Board of Education begin negotiation. Uh I don't know, I, I don't know anything about this uh Lee Soccer Academy. I don't, I don't know anything about them, but you know, I would think that we'd come to this board uh if we want this board to help them.
Well, Commissioner Odom, I think this uh, this gentleman has come to some board members and some board members have heard this guy's spiel, you just must not have been included.
I haven't missed a board meeting since I've been on this board.
I didn't say he come, I said we've, we've met with this individual.
Yeah, well.
At a different location.
I, I don't know him, I haven't met him, you know, and, and, and I, I'd be more than glad to listen to what he's got to say and, and what he's looking for. I, I don't know what he's looking for, other than some support. And it seems like it's, that's money-wise, you know?
No, he ain't looking for no money, he's looking for a place to play.
He's willing to.
If he uses that school field, you gonna get a chance to spend some money.
That's what I'm saying.
That's gonna come, whether you like it or not. I, I don't know.
Prepare.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, I've just, how, how does the Parks and Recreation work when they use school facilities?
We have a joint use agreement with the schools on certain facilities, mainly their gymnasiums. Um so we don't, um outside of the gym, gymnasiums, I don't, I don't think we have, I don't think it covers any other facility with them.
That's something that we're looking at as a board as well. You know, here we are talking about, you know, helping our parks and building certain things where we have facilities available.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, this kind of leads all into that. We, we use some of the facilities, but we, people can't use other parts of the facility? So, or, or other facilities?
Traneway Park is a different situation. We own Tranway Park, but we have a, an agreement with them that they use it for baseball and softball. So that's, that's a separate agreement.
Who makes the call on the football field at Southernly? Principal, Athletic Director?
All of the above. They, you know, so, you know, my understanding is that the principal and the athletic director work together on, on those types of things.
Yeah, so I think, you know, for me, it's, it's, it's the bigger picture. You know, um you're talking about economic development all the time and you talk about, um, you know, Charlotte spends big money on having um pro teams playing. Uh we're not asked to spend big money and this person's actually giving back even costs, helping repair fields, concessions. And this is going to bring people from outside in to come and watch these games because these are other people coming from other areas to come. All part of economic development.
I'm surprised you bring in economic development into it. You've never voted for an economic incentive since you've been on this board.
Well, I have a different feeling, this person's not asking me for money. He's asking for use of a facility and willing to pay, uh different than um me giving money away.
Well, again, I hear and understand what you're saying, but this board does not control that property. And that's why my recommendation would be.
A letter's fine, and that's what I said, but, you know, I was just hoping for the, that the board would see the support and that would agree to move forward, but even a letter's fine.
If, if we're, if we're going to send a letter, we're saying we openly support it, but we not trying to force them.
Exactly, I don't want to force anybody, I just want to let them be aware.
Recommend to this.
That's fine with me.
This group that you try and get a, a meeting with the facilities committee.
And come up with an agreement, they may not come up with an agreement.
Right.
But at least that, that, that has been set down and.
I'll just, that, that's a strong statement, that last paragraph in that resolution.
Oh, we were changing.
As far as the statement toward the school board.
Everybody waiting? Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that I think we've kind of agreed that we're going to go with a letter and not a resolution.
Well, I'm going to throw my.
That seems as fortunate.
I, 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 I have a problem with this whole situation, even with a letter. Um because um I guess it's been three or four months. Uh the manager and I, we, we met um with Mr. Bodge and uh the mayor, uh some other folks and, you know, he, he gave the presentation of what he wanted to do with the soccer stadium. Um the, the way I left that meeting was, it was very similar to SASSL. You know, it was going to be sort of a nonprofit, you know, they were gonna take the kids that he was using.
That's a different thing, that's the academy.
Wait a minute, but he was, he was going to take the, the kids at the academy that were doing the indoor stuff and this was going to be a place for them to play. And then hopefully, you know, it, it would move into some type of a semi-professional or professional um endeavor as well. Uh and you said it similar to the Railhawks? Okay, well, I'm really familiar with the ownership of the Railhawks.
This is how the, this is how the Railhawks, I'm sorry, this is how the Railhawks started.
Right, and I, and I'm, I'm very familiar with the people that started the Railhawks. Um that is very much a for-profit.
Oh, and I see to that, it's for-profit.
And, and um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's nothing personal against the people that are doing this. I think their heart's in the right place. I think um what they want to do would be great for the county. But I think they've gone about it in the wrong way and they've put themselves in a bind because when they met with myself, the manager, um people from the city, and we started talking about this idea, you know, they misconstrued our interest as support. And I don't think they understood how government, local government works. You know, just because the mayor and I said, that's a great idea, you know, and, and we'll work with you and, and, and see what, what we can make happen. That is by no means, you know, an affirmative that they need to move forward and write checks to become part of professional associations. So I think they've got themselves in a bad position. But, but that's not the school board's fault, that's not our fault, that's not the Sanford City Council's fault. I think that's just kind of a misunderstanding of how you do this kind of a project. Um, you know, when we were talking earlier with Mr. Payne, it said that, you know, our fields aren't FIFA regulations. So how do they propose to play those six professional games if they don't meet regulations? Would they, I mean.
Fulfill all the others, the, the league has allowed them to play on that particular size. In the short term.
Okay, so they've just sort of given them a pass until that.
They're waiver.
Waiver, yes, okay. Um so my other concern is um, or another concern, is that, you know, thi- this was all unknown to me four or five months ago. And all of a sudden, you know, they're lighting up the manager and taking up a lot of his time, you know, wanting us to build a three million dollar soccer stadium. Um and, you know, we've got SASSL, Sanford Area Soccer League, that's been here for over two decades and has, you know, mentored and trained and, um, and, and, and helped instill all the good things that athletics do for young people, you know, for thousands of children over those twenty-some years. And they've even, you know, given ten thousand dollars to our park study. And that was what, Tim, two and a half years ago now, you know? Um for us to come up with facilities for them and they've been patiently waiting. And I, I just, you know, from, from a moral and ethical standpoint, I, I, you know, we, they, they've been very patient and waiting for us to come up with plans and provide for facilities, you know, and then all of a sudden.
Understand the different relation between SASSL and this. I mean, this particular person is also with SASSL. I mean, also helps them.
I understand.
Try to get them to the next level. Because a lot of our kids leave this area to play premier because we just don't have that type of caliber here.
I do, I understand.
So this person, as you can see, that's happening down there in um the, in, in, in the Jonesburg area. I mean, he's, he's putting down fields, he's going to put all turf there to have better quality play here in Sanford. So that's only going to help the SASSL organization as well.
Well, I just feel like, again, you know, going back to, there's, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of things you hear in the community uh through the back channels. Um and, and then um the, the fact that, you know, with his interview to the paper, there were a lot of things said that I don't think were necessarily correct. Um, you know, even before I would want to sign a letter from this board, I would want them to come before this board and give a presentation on what they really are truly wanting to do.
I agree with the chair, I think a letter or a resolution, either one is, is like we're trying to influence the school board or we're trying to strong-arm them. I think they need to go before the school board and see what comes out of it.
That's all the intent is for the letter. I, I would argue that it's not in our ballpark.
It's not.
It's not ours. But I'm not opposed to them using the field, but that's for them and the school board to decide.
That's exactly right.
But that's, but that's why I would have a problem signing the letter before they present it to this full board.
No, and what I'm saying is the letter is to instruct them to go.
Uh, uh, to, uh, the letter to this group, not to the school board.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
That's what I was saying to start with, send them to the school board. Lay out what it is you propose to offer in exchange for use of the field.
Right.
What I'm, what I've already said and said to the manager. Bottom line is it's coming back, the bill is going to come back to this board.
You're exactly right.
It's coming back to this board. Whatever happens if they are allowed to use it, any damage to that field is going to eventually wind up before this board.
Within the budget requirement.
This is not, this is not even for our board, I don't think our board even needs to consider it. It's not.
Well, I don't mind helping people get to the right place.
Sure.
Either, but that letter would do that.
But the letter would do that.
Yeah, the letter would do that, to be in.
To the manager and council, they can get something together. I would move for that.
Well, the intent with the letter was to try to get the, the, the board's support to move forward. You know, so just to, in other words, give it some weight as well for them to look at it, not to force them to do anything. To, you know, we can always send a letter to have them redirect their efforts, which they've been trying.
Well, that's why I wanted to copy the school board to say that, yeah, we are, we have entertained and discussed this matter and we don't oppose it, but it's not our call about your fields. That's all I'm saying.
No, no, and, and never meant by the resolution to make it that either, to force them to do anything. Just to give it some weight and consideration.
So, do we have a motion?
There's, there's a lot of things, there's a lot, a lot of kids in the community that really, really look forward to this, that's the main thing too. I mean.
Well, I mean, they haven't. They haven't lost their facility, their indoor facility, correct?
No.
Okay. And, and do you know a timeline for when the, because I know there's a lot of work being done down there right now in Jonesburg.
I do not know the timeline of the Jonesburg. But that's not going to meet, you know, there's a lot more requirements that that field is not going to meet for the professional play.
Yeah, I think you also said there was a time element involved too. I'm sorry, a time element involved as far as getting this.
Is there a motion?
I don't even know where we are anymore yet.
That's what I, I'm.
I'm finished, if you, if you're not interested in what I'm saying to you. Hey, you're bringing something, you, you, you brought a resolution to the board. I am certainly not for the resolution. I don't mind being a part of this board saying to those individuals, you've come to the wrong place. You don't have to say that, but you need to go to the Board of Education, present your case. Here's what we're willing to do in exchange for use of the field. That goes to the facilities committee who will then make a recommendation one way or the other. And then that board, they can call a special meeting just like we call a special meeting, anytime they choose. So they have an opportunity to address it.
Yes, but it doesn't take the, the other portion is, is that I, I would have liked the board, I'll send a letter to the school board, let them know that, you know.
We're going to copy them on, on, on the letter.
That, okay, that's fine.
To T, to Tim's group.
That's what I would.
That's your motion?
That's all I'm willing to do.
No, no, I'm just.
Yes.
All right, okay, any?
Letter going to the San Lee Soccer Academy.
And copy to the county school.
To the Board of Education.
That's correct.
Essentially saying, you know, um we encourage you to go to the Board of Education, lay out your business plan um, you know, for them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, probably formally in writing and, you know, some other.
I mean, they have to present their ins, their insurance coverage, you know.
Meeting with the facilities committee and go from there.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Is that letter going to be signed by the chair or by the manager?
Also, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, well, that's probably better anyway, the, the chair gets to review it before it goes out.
Okay, everybody good, power through? Okay, okay, Ms. Mentor. Good evening.
Good evening. Um first, let me apologize, I realized as I was sitting back here that um I apparently failed to send the sales tax information to Ms. Gamble.
It's.
And then it looks like um our multifunction machine ate one of the pages of your monthly financial report and so it did not get scanned. Um so I do apologize, um, you know. Um, so I do apologize. Um, you know, it was there when we met to go over the agenda. So, um, before you, you have a portion of the July two, only eighteen financial report. Um, I will tell you, please be reminded that sales tax numbers, when you, I'll send you a copy by email of the full report though. Um, but sales tax revenues run three months behind, so for July, August, and September, you will not see any revenues at this time. You will note, if you've looked at the report, that there is an additional column that has been added to the report for the current fiscal year, and that column is labeled encumbrances. There have been changes to the state administrative code that is, um, requiring us to report to the board at least quarterly. Um, and those reports have to include encumbrances for the year. We already provided you a monthly report, so we were ahead of the game and have been doing that for years, but we did have to add the encumbrance column in. So you will see that, um, there, okay? As usual, we use the eight point three three percent for July. That's gonna be skewed now because of the encumbrance report, encumbrances being there. And encumbrances represent purchase orders that have been approved and authorized by either the county manager or the board in the cases where it's the board's decision if they're over twenty thousand dollars. But it also, we have to, any contract that is signed has to be encumbered. So if that contract takes all year to pay out, that encumbrance is gonna be sitting there and will slowly go down. What that's gonna do is when it's added into the actual expenditures, it's going to make that number higher than the monthly, um, percentage would be. So you will constantly be seeing departments that are running over, but of course, in the month-
It actually is a good thing because it shows that they have less money than what they thought they had. So they spend less money. So it's, it's actually a really good thing.
Sorry.
Sorry, I kinda like it.
Transparency.
There you go. That's, that's the goal.
They get to see what they've, they get to see what they've committed to, and they can't spend it twice. So, that's great.
That's, okay.
Can we say that we only have, we don't have very many departments that try to do that though?
That's true.
My departments overall are fairly good. We do have a few, um, but overall, they're fairly good. Um, so, but as usual in July, we are usually over the eight point three three percent target because of the HSA deposits, the annual premiums, the workman's compensation insurance, property and liability insurance, annual dues, and annual maintenance agreements. They're all handled in the month of July or early August. So, um, if you see someone who's at twenty-five percent, it's probably a quarterly appropriation. We'll take the first quarter of that. Um, sales tax collections through May. May was our second highest month of the year. Now, I'll make sure those reports get out to you also. And so we're roughly hovering around four percent growth after the May numbers ran. So I'm crossing my fingers and hoping that June is good also, and that we meet, um, not only our budget, which I don't think will be a problem, but I'm hoping that we'll also meet the projections that we had used during the budget process. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Um, if not, thank you very much.
Sounds good. Sounds like we're missing a party outside.
I didn't know anybody was still hanging around.
I know, I know. Uh, okay, Mr. Krantz.
Yes, ma'am. I have kind of a long report because there's just a lot going on. So I thought it was time to bring the board up to date on the terminal building project out at Raleigh-Vizac and try to, uh, get y'all to put Thursday, September twenty-seventh on your calendar. It's a busy day. Um, but that's also the day of the Triangle J Economic Summit. But at eight o'clock, we start out at the airport and grab a shovel and, uh, uh, do the groundbreaking for that project, even though it's already coming up out of the ground.
What's the date again, John?
September twenty-seventh. Um, fourteen thousand square foot building, two-story, um, quite a change from what was out there. So we thank, we thank our legislature for that support. Agricultural Business Cluster, um, this is something that, uh, the chairman and I were involved in when a discussion with, uh, former Commissioner Burgen over in Harnett County. And all of a sudden, one day, I find out that our economic development director and our cooperative extension director had been going to all these meetings on this report. And, um, so anyway, we had a little discussion, um, and, uh, I actually got, finally got invited to their meeting where the, the presentation was made of the report. And so I decided, I thought y'all should see the report. Um, it's, it's excellent information on agriculture and the need for, uh, basically agriculture, manufacturing, and processing in our area to support the farmers and all the ag assets we have. So there's, um, some discussion about what to do with that report and how to move forward. Uh, we contacted the Triangle J Council of Governments, and they have agreed to try to put something together to help move that forward. And, uh, we'll be making a presentation probably in September, um, on, on that. And yes, we all being asked for some money to help move that project forward. Courthouse renovations, um, have a conference call with Mosley Architects on Wednesday. Hopefully, we'll put some things to bed where we can start discussing the plans with everybody. Um, and then, um, have the, you know, formal presentation at the September meeting of what we're recommending going forward. Once again, like I said earlier, um, you know, the cost of construction is, is basically changing everything that we can and can't do. And, um, you know, the objective here was to create space, and that's what we're trying to do. Not do anything fancy, just create places for people to work. The land use plan, um, I believe the chairman was at a meeting where that was presented, the, the Joint Planning Commission meeting.
Tim as well.
Um, at the end of July, and I think that's moving forward to hopefully have it before us in September.
That's the point.
And, um, I'm assuming we'll have to have a public hearing and all that fun stuff associated with that to, to adopt that. So expect that to be coming up quite a bit. Um, with all the talk about sports, um, I realized that all the, the projects, plans, everything that the city had done, um, with their consultants and that, um, Commissioners Dahl Riffle and Sloan, I believe, were involved in some of those discussions. Um, I don't believe y'all ever got the plans. I don't think it was ever given to the whole board, so I asked for copies from the city. They sent it to me last week, and so it ended up in your agenda packet, and it's quite extensive. Interesting, um, the surveys that they did and the responses, if you go through that, it's worth reading that. Back when, um, oil and gas exploration was really a hot topic in the county, and there was meeting, there were many meetings all over the county to, to discuss it. Um, there were some concerns about air quality associated with oil and gas exploration, specifically the fracking process and some of the issues that occurred up in Pennsylvania. And DEQ set up an air monitoring equipment at the Blackstone site, which is, um, close to the old city landfill. That's all I can say about that site. It's near there or on top of it right there. But, uh, they have had it there for several years. They have a baseline for air testing and wanted to move the, um, the monitoring system to another location. They didn't want to have to buy another one, and so, um, I told them that since they had the baseline information, they could go ahead and, you know, really wasn't up to me. I just said, okay. They were looking for an okay, but, um, so they're gonna move it. But if oil and gas, um, exploration were to start, um, they, uh, all we have to do is ask them, and they would try to bring one back, so, to monitor what's going on during that. But I thought you wouldn't need to know, um, in case anybody found out it was gone, then everybody needed to know about it. We've, um, well, we were, at, at the time I was, uh, wrote this letter. We've had a lot of requests, um, to use the county facilities for political election purposes in recent weeks. Basically voter registrations. Um, I think we've worked some things out, um, where, um, that can occur and not interrupt or violate policy, um, any of our operations. So, um, I just wanted to let y'all know that, that we were getting those requests. And at some point, uh, we may have to address that in a policy, more formal policy. And, um, but I think we've worked things out, worked things out with Mr. Kirkman. And, uh, so I think we're good there. The tobacco warehouse, um, the agreement with, um, the developer, whose name I can't remember. I forgot that information. Um, uh, had, last night at midnight, that agreement was supposed to end.
Right.
Um, there was some discussion up to that point about how to buy the building and execute the agreement. Downtown Sanford, Inc., I think, are still interested in purchasing the building. They sent me a letter, um, asking us to consider a loan from our revolving loan fund. Um, and, uh, it was a sizable amount, probably around five hundred thousand dollars. And after talking it over with, um, the county attorney, we decided to talk to Golden Leaf and just make sure that before we went down the road, having formal discussions with our board and their board, that Golden Leaf felt that that kind of loan would be consistent with our agreement with them. So we've put in a formal request to Mr. Gerlock and his staff to, uh, review the agreement and see if something like this could be done, uh, through that fund. As a reminder, there's over eight hundred and fifty thousand, right around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that fund. The only loan we have outstanding right now is to Saga, and they have one fifteen thousand dollar payment left in January to make. So, um, quite a bit of money in that fund. So I'm just bringing you up to date on that, and that we may discuss that a little bit further in September.
Well, while you're on the subject, uh, we invested in, what was that, the-
We invested in-
Assessment?
In the Phase One environmental and the, um, report from UNC Chapel Hill on the profitability of it.
Right.
So I have a copy of the UNC report somewhere. I've asked for a copy of the environmental assessment.
I'm just trying to get a better understanding, I think. Where we put in there, sixty-five hundred dollars, was it?
I think that's about right. It was-
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It's pretty close. If it was, then-
Yes, sir.
No, no, no.
Yeah, it was, uh, somewhere along in there.
Mm-hmm.
I, and, and I'm not being picky, but when, when we invest that type of money, I like to know the results before I read the newspaper.
Yes, yes.
I think fair is fair. We put in half of the money. I don't know who gave the report and all the, uh, stats, but the storyline wasn't positive. And quite honestly, I felt like we wasted money. So i- if we're gonna engage in these practices in the future, we oughta have some understanding of what we get out of the deals when we do a joint venture. Who notifies us?
What'd you say with the balance of that Golden Leaf Foundation, that you borrowed the loan?
It's about eight hundred and fifty thousand.
And how, that's part of the work. We're, they're gonna, they're asking to borrow the money from?
DSI would be the borrower. They're a nonprofit, um, five oh one C three, which would be consistent with the agreement with, um, Golden Leaf.
For the ripoff and money?
So they would also be, you know, essentially the purchaser of the property. And then we have to develop terms on the payback of the loan. So there are two businesses leasing space in the building, so they would have a revenue stream. Plus, they have the revenue stream from the city and get a commitment from the city to help repay that loan over time, would be part of it. So that's kind of what we're talking about right now. It's all in discussion. Nothing's in concrete. I wanna make sure that that's, you know, known, so that no one has any expectations. It's not realistic at this point. All right, um, so we'll be discussing that more going forward. Couple of things that I didn't put on the, uh, um, in my report that I should have, um, at the last interlocal meeting with the city and town, the census came up. And, uh, wanted to remind the board that, uh, in years past of the census, a census count committee was put together, and the chair, um, plays a vital role with that, with the mayor. And, um, that we'll be working on getting that started pretty quickly, um, so that they can work with Mr. Kabaskets, who's in, who is, this will be his third, and he's looking forward to it.
Along those lines too, in the, in our local meeting, the, uh, they stressed the importance of asking the citizens to participate and be truthful in the census. That a lot of that affects outcomes in the future. And not to be scared to, you know, to let people know how many people are in your house.
It's confidential, but it's very important to us because a lot of revenue that comes from the state-
Yeah.
Is based on your population. So, um, when you look at DSS and the Health Department and the schools, we don't have directly, the county doesn't have quite as much, but there are entities that still do have quite a bit of money tied up in population. So it's an important account for us. One, uh, one issue that came up last year in the school year, I wanted to let everybody know that, uh, this was a problem for us and that we're gonna try to address it next week. But, uh, there was a large contingent of students who were using OT Sloan Park as a parking lot for the Lee County High School. And there were some incidents at the parks, um, associated with them parking over there. So I've had some discussions with the sheriff and the superintendent, and we're going to highly encourage those students to park at the school and not at the park. And a matter of fact, you know, we have an ordinance that says that our facilities are for use by citizens who are using those facilities. So we could tow those vehicles, um, that are parked there where the kids are walking back across the street to the high school. It's all to avoid the eighty-five dollar parking fee. So, um, and there's, it's not because there's not plenty of parking, because there's plenty of parking at Lee County High School. So, um, we just had some incidents. Um, I don't wanna go into them, but they were enough to get the sheriff's attention and the superintendent's intention, and that we probably need to try to stop some of that activity.
Why are those fees so high to park there?
Pardon?
Why are those fees so high to park there?
Um, that is set by the Board of Education. I was watching the, the news the other day. Wake County just raised theirs to two hundred dollars.
Yeah, I mean, county, while, across the state, we've got a pretty good deal going for our parking.
It is, um, the, the school board in Wake County said it was the one thing where they could generate revenue to help maintain their facilities and maintain parking, and it's unrestricted revenue to them too as well.
That's for the school year, right?
That's for the entire year. So after my discussions with the superintendent, he's discussed it with the, with the, the principal. So they're expecting us to send cars over there come Monday and Tuesday next week.
Send cars over there?
Yeah, they don't have parking passes. So they'll be, we'll be turning them around, and they'll be driving over there, and they'll be entering the parking lot without parking passes.
Tow them over there.
We're not towing them over there, but I can tell you that-
Pay for that.
Either pay eighty-five dollars for parking or pay seventy-five dollars for a tow, so.
I was gonna say, make sure that they know what the towing fees are around here.
Well, and I think, I think they've already put it on social media for, for high school students. Because my daughter gets, you know, tweets and stuff from the schools. So I think they're being made aware beforehand. So it's not like gonna be a surprise.
Well, they need to, I'm serious when I say you oughta get the towing fees around here and list them and make sure people know that. Eighty-five will be a great deal if you get towed a couple of times.
Well, like, like Commissioner Odom said, I mean, you're looking at, you know, about ten dollars a month to park.
That's about ten dollars a month. That's all you're talking.
Yeah, two dollars and fifty cent a week to park it.
If you can't afford ten dollars a month to park, you don't need to be driving. I'm telling you.
You don't need to tell me. I had to buy a battery today for one of my children's cars.
Yeah. I had to buy two tires.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep.
Uh, upcoming events, September twelfth, the Saga Annual Meeting. Upcoming events, September 12th, the Saga Annual Meeting. September 17th is our next regular board meeting. September 27th is the terminal building groundbreaking out at the airport and the Triangle J Council Government's Economic Summit at the Dennis Wicker Center. So it is the first major event planned with all the new things completed in the big hall at the Civic Center, so be a big thing. And then in October, we go back to twice-a-month meetings.
So back up to the Triangle J Economic Development Summit. City Councilman Wyhoff has challenged this board for participation and attendance.
Yep.
And she would like to have 100% participation challenge. Now, I told her that it couldn't be 100% because I'm not gonna be in the country that week because of work. But if y'all could, I'd like to ask. She fought hard, and I did also, to get that summit here in Lee County. They did one last year at Clayton, and the community greatly benefited from it, and the comments throughout the region were all very, very positive. And I think with the growth at the Community College and CCCC with what's been happening, that it would look really, really good if we could support that. I apologize, I can't, but...
We already have a lot of staff that has signed up because we... The first session with President Marchand and some of the other leaders from across the state talking about economic development and workforce development is gonna be excellent, so...
Yeah.
I'll be forward to that.
And I think, doesn't this... No, no, no. Doesn't she have a new job as of next month?
The Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, and I mean, that's really special, too, that she's gonna be the Chair of our college, so...
Yeah.
That's really, really a big deal. Okay. Anything else?
No, ma'am. That's... I've taken up more than I've time.
Well, you know, it's all good, busy stuff. That's good.
Just trying to make sure everybody's...
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Dotson?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you. Getting back to the baseball, the guys that were here earlier. There was another team that went to Cooperstown. There was 104 teams involved from all over the country. They finished fourth. They made it to the Final Four, and they finished fourth out of 104. So just a quick shout-out to them as well.
Absolutely.
Same age group as these guys. Matter of fact, there was a couple of these guys that were here was on that other team.
Wow. We may have... We may have some, you know, real major leaguers that were in here tonight. That's great. Commissioner Odom?
Oh, there was one I wanted to ask, John, the little SWAT Little Bug cars.
Yes, sir.
How is... How are we getting those out to the public?
I can't answer that right now.
If you don't mind, find out in Oz. I'll find out. That's it for me.
You know, that might be a good thing. Maybe the county...
I have one on my desk.
I think the county needs to boot that the fair this year when hand them off.
That'd be a good thing. That's what I... I'd like to know how we're getting them out.
The back right back there is going...
They're all mine as well. They're all mine as well. Yeah, there's like, there's a form you can fill out if you... See, I can't remember. I saw it the other day, the form. You put like the license plate information.
I've seen some improvement, but I think it's basically because we've got folks out cleaning up in the bad areas. I still see people throwing stuff out the window, you know? I don't know how you stop that other than write a ticket and let them pick up trash on Saturday.
That's right. Commissioner Sloan?
No, I'm good. I just wanted to mention about the Triangle J Council Government Summit being here. I thank everybody and staff for what they do.
Commissioner Reese?
Move to adjourn after you speak.
Okay, I'll make it quick. Couple? Okay. A couple of things. Just, I had a text from the superintendent to remind the board, you know, that you're invited in the morning at 8:45 to the... I still call it the new gym, because I was there when they built it. That shows my age. But the larger gym that's used now in the morning at 8:45 for the convocation for all of our teachers to start the school year. I'll be speaking. I'll have our board and hopefully peppin' them up for, you know, the next 180 days of instructional days with the kids. So, you know, if you're riding around Lee County High School around 8:30, I know everybody would love to have you. And along those lines, just my public service announcement for the month is, yes, school starts next week. We already have, you know, Lee Early College and Tremway have already started, but all of our schools will be open and wide-rolling and buses on the road and kids beside the road waiting on them and walking. So please, please, please be extra careful. I know, as we've talked many times with our concerns about Kelly Drive, with young people on their cell phones and not paying attention to traffic and walking out into the road, which is... Need to be extra vigilant as drivers. So good luck to the teachers and the other support staff and principals and kids, and I hope they all have a good year this year. With that, I think Mr. Reeves has already done the preliminary motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.
Yes, sir.